All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on June 27th, 2022. Quorum of the Planning Board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, Approval of Minutes for January 13th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I find that the minutes were very effective. They were very to the point. I can't believe how dense it was. I have a motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item B. Under Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions, Agenda Item B1, Committee Reports. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I had one, but it got pulled off.
Okay. There's, um, do you want to just pull your thing over? Because I'm not sure if they're picking you up. Your mic. It's just being mic over, so I don't think they're picking you up.
Oh, good.
I don't know, I'm not sure where this fits, but we all got the invitation for the visit of the school. I was just, you know, I was just asked that if we're going to attend, you know, that we commit, that we are attending and then attend. That way we don't come up short on the visitors that they're expecting. If you can't, you can't, that's fine, but just.
What is that against you?
July 14th.
July 14th. All right. All right, very good. So Agenda Item B2, Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of updates on some projects going on in town. I'll start with 2532 Main Street. Sina Auto plans to use this as a service center to service their existing auto dealership. It will not serve as a primary retail operation, but an accessory to the existing car dealership. They received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in February to allow this use. It brings an old site back into operation and kind of allows, you know, a site that could have been abandoned in use to be repurposed in an appropriate way. Next item, 2131 Main Street. You may remember this as a site plan special permit that was issued in 2019. The owners have started submitting plans to the Fire Department and the Building Department. They posted their bond related to the special permit issued by this board, and the owner's contractor is going to be submitting the complete building permit application in the next coming weeks. This is a site that's been on the board's radar for a little while because of its a bit unkemptness, but hopefully that's on its way out at this point. Next item, 1879 Main Street. You will remember that they came to us with an A and R, an Approval Not Required Plan, right before town meeting to freeze the use of being able to apply for a special permit for a car wash for the old Funland site. The applicants have proposed the car wash, and they have appeared in front of the town staff for an interdepartmental review on June 7th, where they received substantial feedback from the town engineer, building commissioner, and conservation agent. They'll be in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit hearing this Thursday, June 30th, at 6:30 PM. If that special permit is granted, the applicants are on the agenda for the Planning Board July 18th meeting for the site plan review. Next item, 1800 Main Street, that's the Starbucks. Construction is well underway, and they're going to be coming to the board next month on July 18th for their signed special permit application to review all the site signage. Next item, 1201 Main Street. Auntie Dog has applied for a tenant fit up to move into this space. They're expanding, so they're going to be, you know, expanding their training offerings and moving into that space in the next couple of days or weeks. 759 Main Street, Mexico Burrito Grill. They have applied to update their signage. It'll be within the parameters of the zoning bylaw, so it's only going to be a building permit, and they will not be visiting this board. And the board may be delighted to hear that it's not going to be an electronic message board sign. They're just going to be redoing the sign that they have there. Next is 623 Main Street Eco Auto. You may remember those folks following the zoning bylaw review very closely to be able to open a green and a green and hybrid electric vehicle dealership in town. They are looking at 623 Main Street, which is the former Nissan Auto. They had their interdepartmental review with town staff on June 14th, and they are also scheduled for the July 18th Planning Board Agenda. And like with Sina Auto, this is going to be a revitalization of an old site in town and one that has a lot of visibility. So we're looking forward to that, you know, looking a little nicer. And last item for me is 135 Pleasant Street or the new elementary school. The chair alluded to this board being invited to a site visit on July 14th, and the email was forwarded to you folks. And if you do want to attend, just let us know as soon as possible so that they can, you know, have their heads accounted for. And that application will be coming to the board next month for their signed special permit to have a sign similar to the high school with the stone monument on the bottom with the addresses and the electronic message board sign in the middle. And that's all for me.
Just terminology wise, when you mentioned on 1879 Main Street, and you said, it was just a phrase, they're not coming in under the new zoning though, right?
Yes, they are. So the Approval Not Required Plan was a mechanism of zoning just to freeze the ability to apply for, I know, the ability to apply for a special permit to operate a car wash. That special permit purview is under the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if they get, so it's going to be a sequence of boards and committees for them. So if they get through the ZBA for the used special permit, which was under their provision of the old bylaw, which is what they preserved, they still do have to come to the Planning Board for a site plan review under everything else's, the new zoning. So it's just the use that they froze of the old bylaw.
Okay, so even though, so even though the site isn't allowed for it anymore.
Correct.
They froze that, but then they're going to use the new rules.
For the rest of their review.
And when you're saying, you refer to it as the review light is what they're coming in for?
They're going for, they're coming in for site plan review, so that'll be, you know, reviewing for access and adequate utilities and just, you know, overall site flow.
So similar to what we did at our last meeting the first time?
With Treehouse?
Yeah.
Yes, but this is going to be, excuse me, rather than a redevelopment and an addition of an existing building, this is going to be a whole redevelopment with new structures and everything like that. So it's the same mechanism, but the review is going to be a little more detailed and a little more weighty just because they're starting from nothing.
Chairman, I had a question for Alice if I could. So 2131 Main Street. Is it the new owners there or existing owners? Do you know?
I believe it's the same owner that, excuse me, it was permitted under, which is a BTGOG LLC.
Mr. Feneros, is that the same outfit that?
Mr. Feneros represented the real estate firm that was going through the permitting process. I don't know if he was ever with the ownership.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B3, 77 North Bill Ricka Road, Approval Not Required Plan. Do we have anybody here for 77 North Bill Ricka? You want to come up? Can you just state your names and addresses for the record? The floor will be yours.
Leanne Parr, 88 North Bill Ricka Road.
Linda Catalano, 180 Front Street.
Floor is yours.
Are you the applicants or just?
Sisters, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so just let us know where you do.
So my mom passed away in March, and this is her, it was her land, and now we are the trustees. And we're just separating the land out for two lots and then marking her actual home lot. So that, and everything conforms to the one acre zoning. And.
Very good. Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having reviewed the plan, I was quite surprised that this land hadn't been used before now.
My mother would never have sold it in a million years.
I understand how that works.
She liked having no one around her.
Time goes on.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Chairman, everything in the zoning is special, all set? Setbacks are all set? Density, everything, I'm all set.
Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, it looks to me like there are two, three more than conforming lots, and I don't have any problem with any of that.
Mr. Frataya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions I had. So the lot lines are fine. So the house that exists there is 74, correct?
That is correct.
So why would Lot 4 be 77, or is that not the case?
We don't know where the 77 came from.
Okay.
We, the plan, doesn't the plan say 74 North Bill Ricka Road?
The original dwelling says 74.
Right.
The lot next door doesn't have a number on it? Neither does the one on Whipple, which is the other side of it.
Right, no numbers.
My only question was, if you were to number that address as, you know, a lower number than 74 would probably be appropriate, 72 or 70 Whipple.
Right, we didn't assign the 77.
Okay. It wouldn't be them.
Yeah.
The assessor's office would do that, yeah.
So they'd do both plots as different addresses.
Correct.
Being a postal worker for years, you'd think the one had the sequence and the line, so they could just add it into the listing, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set.
Chair's all set as well.
Thank you.
All right, so what is the pleasure of the board as to the A and R plan?
We're not done yet.
Have a motion on the A and R plan?
I have a motion to approve the, the plan.
So I have a motion to endorse the A and R plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck. Moving on to Agenda Item B4, 2122 Main Street, Special Permit Extension Request.
Maybe you can pull another chair up too if you want. Once you folks get settled, just state your names for the record, and the floor will be yours.
Hi, we're Joel and Gene Leader and our son Derek, who's a Massachusetts Construction Supervisor licensed person.
Floor is yours.
We are coming today to request a one-year extension for the property at 2122 Main Street. We were here a year ago, and it was discussed at that point in time. And we had required, or we had requested a two-year extension, and a one-year was approved. We still find that we need additional time to get the building permit application completed. We've been through the plans to update them according to the new code for Massachusetts because when the original plans were built, they were built with the 2009 codes. We've also done some extra work with the IRD, and we've done other work with regards to electrical work with the National Grid. They are not coming back with their plans or their recommendations for six to eight weeks. And we've been trying to incorporate a number of Tewksbury contractors and subcontractors in this project because we feel that this project is a good project for Tewksbury, and we would like to see it proceed, but we need an extension.
All right, start with Mr. Duffy.
So what exactly is the project now?
We have the special permit that was approved in April of 2016, and the plans are to have a commercial building with a small parking lot and nine townhouses. According to the original special permit, that's what we intend to build.
So what, what happened to the commercial component on that project?
I had been here at the planning.
Yeah, you need to pull the mic over.
I came to the Planning Board meeting in April and requested that, but I believe the gentleman on the left was not here, and you guys weren't able to vote on it. But we brought it to everybody's attention that the current set of plans would have effectively hurt Donna's Donuts business, and we tried.
Excuse me, could you pull the microphone in front of you?
That way they record it so they can do the minutes.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So we proposed to change the plans to include a commercial parking lot for Donna's Donuts since they currently lease the land in which the property sits on. And the current set of approved plans would effectively, you know, kill their business by limiting how many customers they could have by taking away at least half of them. So the viable solution that we came up with was to upgrade their parking lot to a real parking lot, not the gravel lot that, you know, drags aggregate onto the state highway there. And so it was proposed to upgrade that and then just to include a couple more townhomes in place of the commercial building and have the commercial lot be sufficient for the mixed used property.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. So you're back to your original plan? You've abandoned that thought, or you're still considering it?
We would still consider it, but because we need to have an extension to really fully vet that and just make sure that everything is okay with a revised plan. That's why we're looking for this extension first so that we can then come back.
So would it be, would it be accurate to say that you'd like the one-year extension to either pursue the current plan or a potential alternative plan? Is that accurate?
Our son was here on April 11th.
Yep, no, we remember.
Okay, and there was no decision made at the end. We thought the new plan might be approved by now. But since not approved yet, we thought we should extend the current plan and deal with that separately.
All right. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
So are you saying that you thought that there was going to be some type of approval after the April 3rd meeting there?
I thought that was. We weren't at the meeting because we're out of town. Derek was here with Matt Hammer from Landplex, and I thought we could resolve them, but it wasn't. And I think it was because there was no quorum, somebody was missing.
Yeah, I don't think that was the case, to be quite honest with you. I think that we talked about it, but I don't think that there was any, any sort of.
Just give it one second, Mr. Duffy? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that night was a concept plan review? There would not have been any decision made that night?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was just kind of to balance it off the board and get their feedback about whether to proceed.
You know, and I'm not sure what the intention was on your part, but something like that, that's really just an initial discussion with us to sort of get a feel from the board, you know, how we might feel about that and generically without specifics.
Right.
And I know you got some different perspectives, I believe, that evening of where everybody kind of fell. We also sought some, excuse me, some clarification as well, which I'm not sure whether or not you followed up on because we had asked to check into it. Would they have even, would they even know that?
I'm not sure. You guys had asked me for the follow-up. I hadn't relayed any of that. The follow-up regarding whether it would be inappropriate.
My memory serves me, we were going to get a legal opinion as to whether the parking.
Which we did. That's what, that's what I was getting to. So I just wanted, so the decision from Town Council was that the using, creating the parking lot as a commercial use would fall within the things we could do. Obviously, whether we do would be a later decision. It's just not something you can't do. So that was a question that night. There was some disagreement about whether or not that would qualify or not. As far as Town Council is concerned, it would qualify. It then comes to us whether or not we'd want to grant it. That's a different decision if you were to come in with an official filing, at which point we could discuss that. But that, just so you're up to speed in case you were not, that's what we'd be working on.
What would be required, committed, an official filing? What would be different?
What would be different?
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't be in our administrative section. You'd be in our hearing section. The way you got the first permit, it's the same thing. So it's, you know, you got to turn in the plans. You got to pay the fees, all the things you do to, you know, to request this change to your permit. You know, I mean, I guess it's a slightly less process because you're changing, but it all depends on what you're bringing in because you're still bringing in something different to build off of the one you had. So you're not totally from scratch, but, you know, if you're talking about other townhouses and a parking lot, that's what we need to see. But that's the official, you know, if you get to that point.
And I just wasn't aware that the council had made the decision.
That's why I wanted to mention it, in case you were.
And my recollection is as well, is that there were a couple of what-if type questions, you know, like, what if Donna's Donuts went away the next day? What happens to the parking lot and so on and so forth? So I think that there was a lot of balls in the air after that meeting. Not that it was a bad idea, and I think that there was, still, I don't think it was, we had talked about the affordable component as well, that the additional units.
All things that if you would have made an official filing, we would talk about then, because again, the initial one was just a concept idea to see, you know, for you to be able to get a chance for the board to give you a little bit of feedback and see where we might be. And all those kind of items would only come up if we got to an official filing when we would discuss all the nuts and bolts, okay?
Okay, gotcha.
All right, and Mr. Chairman, just one more point, just in closing. You know, I don't, I don't have a particular problem with an extension, but I really think a year is too much. I think we've had way too many extensions on this project, and this is my opinion. I think six months would be, would be more. I'd be more comfortable with that. That's just my opinion on that.
And, you know, we'll see where we all end up with. I don't think we've ever done one that short. Only because, again, if we're talking about the possibility of getting another filing.
Sure.
That could be how long our hearings take just for that filing alone to get through it. I hate to have to undo an extension in the middle of a hearing. So usually, most ask for two. We'd be cutting people back to one generally more often than not.
Okay.
You know, I think we're a little more lenient with COVID, but now that we're on the other end of that, you know, six months is a little too quick of a turnaround. But, you know, your recommendation, I'll wait and see what the other folks, what they think, but, you know, I'd kind of rather stick to the year. All right, Mr. Fowler?
I am all set.
All right, Mr. Frataya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we talked about this a number of times over the past years when the place is vacant and the lot is not being maintained and cleaned and all so forth and so on. It's on Main Street, so. So my concern is that we keep continuing and continuing and continuing, and it's just, it's just never happening. So, you know, my initial opinion was to not extend another year lease because we gave you that a year ago. You wanted two, we gave you one, and we're still in the same situation a year's gone by. And, you know, Mr. Hammer came in with the other plan with yourself, you know, and discussion was made about the land next to Donna's Donut is leased. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was never, never notified to us at all in a previous meeting until we asked. So is there a lease date on that, or when it extends, or when it ends, or?
It's in perpetuity as long as they're in business.
Okay.
That's the current lease, you know. We don't have any plans to not lease to them.
And the last point you discussed when you came in last time was the possibility, and I think I brought it up, of selling that piece of land to Donna's as a permanent parking lot possibly, and then you designing another, another plan for the rest of that location with the commercial space and housing as you discussed as well, so.
About a year ago, we actually talked to.
Could you use?
Yeah, about a year ago, Gene and I had a meeting with Billy Jr. at Donna's Donuts, and we offered to sell it to him. And he liked the idea, but then he realized it's maybe for some reason too expensive for him. So he changed his mind.
Okay.
He doesn't mind paying the lease. He, he had some other plans that he wanted to put a kitchen in there. He didn't want to, couldn't afford both at the same time.
Okay. Well, I agree, but I mean, last time you guys come in, you were going to make that a permanent parking lot next to him, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So he's going to be a part in mine.
So it seemed like everything's still up in the air, you know. You know, again, I was not in favor of allowing another year's lease, but another year's extension, but, you know, I guess I'll wait and see what my other members say as well, so.
Well, the only member left.
Yeah.
It's me. You know, I don't have an issue with this, but, you know, as Mr. Fowler said, this has gone on for a while. Yeah, I think it would be in your best interest to figure out within this year time what you're going to do. Because I would not guess that if you were to come back again in a year, that this is going to happen again. So if it is granted tonight, I think you should look at it as being more than likely the last time that we're going to do this before we're going to start from scratch again. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Understood, thanks.
I understand it's part of this project several years before we bought it was a previous owner, and he had intended to put a jewelry shop in that shop.
No, we understand that, but that's also what we're working off of.
I understand.
You know, we approved this quite some time ago. Things have changed, and at some point, we need to look at the properties that haven't done what they were going to do and review them now in the current situation and whether or not what might go there still makes sense.
Okay.
So, you know, you're kind of hanging on to a decision we made some time ago, and things have gone up. Things have happened, you know, things have changed. And if, you know, if we're willing to give you some time to figure it out, but at some point, that time runs out, and we have to start thinking, you know, we've just passed into the zoning bylaw. There are things that have changed, you know, and, you know, we start to evaluate these properties again in light of the things that have happened since. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, understood.
All right. All right, so with that, we're still in the administrative, so it's just us. All right, so what is the feeling of the board on the permit extension request?
I would make a motion that we grant the one year with the caveats that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I guess in this case, not, I mean, just the advisors.
Yeah, with the advisor.
Yeah, so, all right. I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to Agenda Item C, 30 Commerce Way, Site Plan Review, Land Disturbance Permit, Special Permit. Have a motion to waive the public reading?
Some more.
Motion made in second, it all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Once everybody gets settled, if you just give everybody's name for the record. Guys got two mics, so everybody share.
It does.
It does. Yeah. You got moved to the little kids' Thanksgiving table, but that's fine. It's all right.
It's usually more, it's usually more fun. Everyone ready? Okay. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reamir Bronstein, to my left, Christine Hung from my office and associate. Um, and to her left, Bob Micho, our traffic consultant. And, uh, to his left, Tyler Murphy, the head of, uh, uh, representing the applicant and he's the head of construction and development. And to my right, Greg Debona from Bowler Engineering, who is our site civil. We're here this evening.
Chairman, just for a second, can you see in the back? Can you see?
Oh, yeah. Let's just dim it a little.
One, one second. Better? Better? Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
We're here this evening to discuss the development of a industrial flex building on property that is currently undeveloped and is located to the rear of the existing 30 Commerce Way. The building will be approximately 88,000 square feet. And, um, we have spent the last few months having numerous meetings with staff and the various town, um, departments. Uh, we have received comments. Uh, we are in the process of responding to those comments. I think we feel comfortable that we can provide satisfactory responses to, uh, the comments we've received to date. I'm sorry, I said 88,000. It's 87,000 square feet. The building is a broad brush approach. We'll have six loading docks. Approximately, uh, for 50, uh, then we'll have 58 poys and 58 parking spaces. And we are currently before the Conservation Commission, uh, which is a, a sensitive site. Um, and I think the hearing, the reports that I've had, uh, with respect to the, the initial meeting with the ConCom went extremely well. And I think that, uh, we will hopefully resolve the issues that they have raised. And we feel confident when this is done, it will be a, uh, a well-conceived, constructed and revenue-enhancing project for the town of Tootsburg. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tyler, the principal of the applicant, uh, to make some comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Can you?
So again, my name is Tyler Murphy. Uh, I'm the applicant here today. Uh, so just a brief second about Rhino Capital. So, uh, we're, uh, mainly an industrial development group.
People in the back can't hear. You have to pull the microphone closer to you and?
Absolutely. Not a problem.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, so just a, a quick second just about Rhino Capital. So we're an industrial-based developer in Boston. We do multifamily life science and industrial flex buildings on the greater Boston area and all the way down to the Lakeville area, Plymouth County and such. So obviously we have in front of us today an industrial flex building that we're here proposing. And we have the agenda in front of us today, so we're going to just do a quick overview of the site, what's existing, what we're proposing and why. Uh, we do have, uh, Bob here to talk about traffic, just sort of, uh, how the study was conducted, what the results of that were in the overview. And then we get into stormwater management, planting and a photometric plan throughout, uh, throughout this presentation.
With the chair's consent, I think we'll have Greg walk through the site plans.
Yep. And I just, before we get into this site itself, want to just have a quick review just of some of the important dates that we've had thus far. So we started working on this project at the beginning of the year, uh, prior to the new zoning being passed. But we had a, on 4/20, our informal meeting with the town. On May 3rd, we had our IDR, our virtual meeting that reviewed the site plans. Uh, and then last week, on Tuesday, we received our planning staff comments. Uh, on Wednesday, we had our Conservation Commission hearing. As Bob said, that was relatively well-received. I think the big takeaways from that meeting were that a site walk was going to be necessary. Uh, and that's been scheduled at this time. And additionally, we had not received our DEP file number. But we anticipate that both those things will be occurring prior to our next Conservation Commission hearing. Uh, on Thursday, we did receive the town engineer comments. And again, as Bob said, we felt that the comments that we've reviewed, uh, we can address to the satisfaction of the board over the coming weeks. Um, and then of course, tonight, we're, we're here. So just a little bit about the existing sites. What we have in front of us here is an aerial overview of the existing building at 30 Commerce Way. And then next to it is sort of just a little bit more zoomed out version from MassMap or the GIS system, just to give a little more context into where the parcels are actually located. So it's just shy of a 12-acre property between the two parcels. It is a completely industrialized zone. Uh, from our visits out there and some of the test pits that were done, it's sparsely forested. There's sort of some trash debris, other items out there. It appears that Atlantic may over time have attempted some type of exploration activities out there. The building at its nearest corner, once we get into that, is 110 feet from the residential zone. Um, it's on an angle, so it goes from 110, averages about 145 feet. And it's, farthest point is 180 at the near side. Uh, and the setback consists, you can see the kind of forested area over there, um, up to the left corner of the aerial image. Uh, a lot of that is going to remain and stay and some of the areas that are being removed will be replaced with formal landscaping. The building sits more in the area that looks a little more sparsely vegetated. Uh, that sits sort of directly behind in line with the 30 Commerce building that exists today. That Greg, if you want to talk about what's proposed.
Great. So, um, again, this is Greg Debona with Bowler. Um, we were the site civil on the project and, um, what you're looking at here is just a colored version of the site plan documents that were supplied. Uh, we blew up the zoning analysis table and just included it on the, on the plan for reference. But the, the colored portions of the building on the, um, southern portion of the site, that's all the existing limits of 30 Commerce. The L-shaped building that's in like that tan orange color, that's our proposed facility. And, um, as Bob had mentioned earlier, you know, it's a roughly 80, 87,000 square foot of like a flex industrial facility. We're designing on spec. We don't have an intended user, but we anticipate for this size user, six loading docks would be appropriate and applicable for their use as well as one compactor space. I will say that, so the, the thing to consider with this site is that our access, which, um, is really tying in off of Commerce Way, really, really terminates at the entrance point to their parking lot. So we are going to be connecting our driveway to the same Commerce Way access point. So that the access down to the, to the intersection is not changing at all. We're just extending that accessway further up. We do have, uh, um, access that cuts through and mitigates, um, some needs to mitigate some wetlands and a stream relocation, which we have discussed with Conservation Commission. It, it was very well received. As you come into the site, um, we, we put a lot of effort into making sure that the truck circulation would stay separate from the rest of the employee parking field. So, um, when you get to that first lower, uh, corner of the building, really that kind of splits the separation between truck access, which will stay on the right-hand side, abutting the wetland area. There's that light gray color, um, hatch, which is in the truck court, which is the concrete area for the truck spin and the truck loading. And then the vehicles would actually come back around, um, and, and leave in the same direction they came in along the side of the building. There is, uh, access gates that we have that would prevent, um, truck traffic or even employees from circulating around the back of the building. That, that darker gray driveway that you see is only for emergency access. It's only intended for fire access. And there are, um, emergency access gates on both sides of the driveways. Um, whereas the employee parking field, which is, uh, currently depicted at 58 spaces, basically lines with head-on parking and sidewalks directly adjacent to the front of the building. Uh, we are depicting it more as an entry corner, uh, which is located in the, if you're looking at the building, the lower left-hand corner, that is the entrance. And you can kind of see it marked by that entry tree as well as the, uh, uh, blue-colored accessible parking spaces. The, the rest of the perimeter of that site, as you're moving around, um, really, I'd say clockwise around the building, you'll see a retaining wall. The retaining wall is, is basically providing that separation, uh, between us as well as some of the residential, uh, buffers, um, on the, on the west side of the plan. The, those properties primarily in the, uh, upper left-hand corner, sit several feet higher than the finished floor that we're opposing for the building. So the site is actually much higher on the left-hand side than it is on the right-hand side when you're looking from left to right. Uh, there's approximately 30 feet of grade change actually from that, from that corner where you see those three, uh, shade trees and then all the way down to the, the pocket of the wetlands. So when we were placing this building and sizing, uh, the dimensions, we came up with really this L-shaped, uh, configuration. What this did for us was it, it used the building itself as a nice, um, buffer for the truck operations, uh, and loading and circulation to, uh, any of the activity on the, on the west, uh, side where the landscape buffer is. We do have, um, so we're, we're at approximately 38% in previous coverage, which, which does comply. We, uh, did incorporate the latest, uh, zoning requirements that were adopted in the, in the May 4th. I guess the bylaw meeting. What I will say is that we did acknowledge that there, there are some updated landscape requirements, which we do have to still accommodate. I don't think it will change the, the context, but it's just the, the reference points. Uh, because the, the codes and the numbers have changed slightly, but we do acknowledge we have to update that on our landscape chart. And as far as the parking goes, you know, when we, when we started the, the project, it was still based on really the older code and it had, it required less parking. The new parking requirement would be one per thousand, which is 88 parking stalls. Based on our experience and the type of user that we're expecting to see here, that seemed like more, much more than what was actually needed. So what we, what we strove for, strove to do originally was kind of meet in the middle and, and put in about one per 1,500, which equaled the 58 parking stalls. Uh, now I do understand after looking at the review letters that there is a, a condition where, where only maybe about 30% reduction could, could be possible, which would put us at 62 parking stalls. So we're only four short from where we are right now. Um, I, I think, I'm convinced we will be able to find an area for those four spaces. Um, I would like to consider the idea of maybe banking those four spaces in the sense that we could show them on the plan as potential, but not intend on building them unless we need it, based on operations, tenant need, et cetera. But we can still show where they'd be located. The alternative would be that they would stay as a lawn, it would be an open lawn that we could use for additional snow storage until the time is needed where we have to pave those additional four parking stalls. Um, so we would like to?
Can I make a comment on that?
That's great. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the, the intent here on that is that in most projects of this magnitude, you want to maximize the green space and not do hard space unless you actually have to. We just want to show the board, if we had to, we could put them in. But I think it's a better project by keeping the, you know, one of the areas is that lower left-hand corner where we have the three trees and the grass and all there.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be best to keep that as natural. If, and if we needed them, we could convert them. But I think from an environmental standpoint, an aesthetic standpoint and a planning standpoint, if the board so chooses, we'd like to preserve spaces, uh, to show that we could build them, but keep it as natural as possible.
Yeah. I, I think that's fine, but you know, obviously the trade-off is because you don't know who might be going in there. I think it would be important for us to be able to see that you can put them.
That's correct. Yeah.
And then we'll deal with that later if it comes up. But, you know, it's one of those things that you can comply. And then we maybe be able to lean and say, well, you could do it. We don't really need you to, but we know you can.
Thank you. Yeah. I think that's correct.
That's right. So, um, as far as the zoning analysis section goes, I mean, this, this building, this layout does comply with the setback requirements. It complies with the limitations of the building height, um, the square footage, really, really all aspects except for the, this issue of parking count. So that is our only, uh, variance relief that we are seeking. And what I'll do now is later on, we'll talk more about the site grading and the stormwater. So I'll, I'll use those slides to reference. But I'll pause for a moment in case there's any questions right here on the site before I move on.
No, just, we'll just keep going.
Keep going? Okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. So here, this is a, uh, just a more blow-up, blown-up version of the grading plan. Uh, so we superimposed the contour lines, uh, on top of our colored rendering. And the, the really dark, uh, lines that you see that could really circumvent the perimeter of the site are all those contours that we're tying in at three to one. Uh, and we do have retaining walls, uh, not only on the south and west side, but also on the east side adjacent to the wetlands. So, um, again, we're trying to limit that disturbance envelope as much as possible. And we're utilizing the walls to maintain as much existing vegetation as possible as opposed to grading back and, and removing a lot of those, uh, trees that are, that are especially on the west-hand side. On the, on the, let's call it the northwest corner, where you see that there's a gravel access drive that gets us down to the basin. This is only intended for basin maintenance. We, we really have to do that just for the sake of service and, and cleaning. But it's, it's not an access road that gets used, uh, frequently at all. And it's mostly really for, um, maintenance of mowers, uh, and landscape maintenance to get down into the basin. But that's what that, that curvilinear path is that kind of cuts off the driveway. Uh, it's an eight-foot wide gravel access drive. Um, and again, in this plan, you can kind of see where, where the stormwater basin is at the, uh, on the north property. There's also two underground basins and I have another slide that I'll get into, uh, that shows that a little bit better. But yeah, our challenge is here is trying to mitigate the fact that we do slope approximately 30 feet really from the, uh, from the southwest to the northeast. And we, we placed the building at a lower elevation to kind of split the difference and also helped us be able to maintain as much of the grades, the vegetation on the west-hand side as possible, while still trying to mitigate how much disturbance we have within the wetland buffer. And again, we, we did stay outside of all the wetlands on that side. We stayed outside of the 25-foot no build limit, um, or sorry, no disturbance limit. Uh, and we were able to maintain, uh, most of the integrity of all that wetlands. And that we're also even replicating, um, uh, at a two-to-one ratio of the wetlands that we are disturbing within our access drive.
And then Greg, sorry, before we move on from this slide, is it accurate to say that the retaining walls that you were mentioning are roughly four to six feet tall?
Yeah, that's correct.
And it's continuities. These aren't, you know, large, large retaining walls and they'll be done with kind of a?
Yeah. That's correct.
A block. Yeah.
Yeah. We're, we're proposing a large oversized block, right? So the, the block is intended to also require less tiebacks and less disturbance of the vegetation. So it's, it's really kind of the more desirable methodology of putting in block walls. Uh, but most of our walls are in that four to six foot in height. Um, but again, using those walls, that also saves us, you know, roughly 20 feet of potential additional disturbance in grading. Uh, so we put in the wall, we don't have to disturb that vegetation. And, um, I think that's all I want to cover on the grading. Utilities, uh, this is more of actually a blow-up of that lower, uh, right-hand corner of the building as you first get into that driveway split that, that separates the, the accessway to the loading area versus the accessway to the, uh, employee parking field. We chose this blow-up on, just to be able to emphasize where all the utilities are coming from. Luckily, I think the prior owner developer was always factoring in some sort of development in the back here because a lot of our utilities, our needs, our water lines, uh, our electric, our gas are all stubbed right into that end of that driveway, as in to always be able to provide something for our future development in the rear. Um, so we're able to pull our water main, our gas, our electric, and even the sewer. There's the, the, the public sewer and the sewer main runs actually right through, uh, a portion of the site, almost, almost hugging the edge of the wetland line. So the sewer infrastructure is already in place. And all we have to do is basically run our new lateral from the building and tie into the main. Um, so that's what you're seeing here on these colored, you got the water line in blue. We are proposing a loop to our water line, so we are providing, I think, four hydrants throughout the site, um, to basically loop back onto the main. And we are able to pull the underground electric and drop in a new transformer and then run it to, uh, our, that first corner of the building. And again, sewer's quite nice in this condition. The fact that the main's already set up there, it's got low inverts, it's easy for us to tie in. We can run a nice gravity, uh, lateral directly into the tie-in point. So limited utility improvements for a site like this because of how well it was set up, uh, originally. And then we'll cover traffic.
Yes. Uh, thank you. For the record, Robert Micho with MDM Transportation Consultants.
This is where I will break though, because traffic's kind of its own beast. So I'd like to leave that for a second and see if we have questions here.
Do you want me to, do you want me to jump and finish this, the stormwater and the, the civil stuff and then go back to traffic?
Yeah. Why, why do we do that?
Okay. I can do that.
You could cut it that way.
Yeah. So, so then let me just finish on stormwater. I kind of covered a little bit during the, the prior slides about the, how the site grades and how, how we are handling drainage. The, the three blue features here highlight our, uh, basically our stormwater mitigation. So we have an above-ground infiltration basin in the back. When I say back, it's really the north property edge. That basin itself collects really all the runoff from all the paved surface areas. And has pre-treatment in basically the sediment for bay. And then, uh, everything is basically sized for 100-year storm detention. Uh, and then overflow release through riprap to the wetland area. Uh, we have extremely good infiltration rates, good soil here on the site. So, uh, we're able to, um, basically mitigate, uh, all, all those requirements, whether it's the water quality, the recharge, um, and, and the actual retention. What we did with the, the building itself is we actually split the drainage of the roof so that half the roof basically runs towards the front, which goes into that, uh, underground infiltration basin in the front parking field. And then the, the portion of the building to the back really gets diverted into the underground system within the truck court itself. We still have isolator rows on these basins, but this is all relatively clean water because it's only taking water in from the, the roof itself. So we're not intermixing, which is nice. We're getting clean, straight runoff from the roof right into the infiltration basins. And then discharge points or overflow reliefs, uh, through riprap down to the, basically the, the, uh, wetland buffers. So everything again continues in that eventual pattern of right now it all drains really from the southwest to the northeast. And it all still remains in that situation, uh, after doing all of our reductions. And we do meet our requirements for TSS removal and for phosphorus. So, um, we're, we're really happy with the overall, um, stormwater mitigation plan on this, on this project. Uh, the planting plan, we, we, um, again, the, the visual aspects of this The planting plan, we, we, again, the, the visual aspects of this site is, it's, it's really not going to be well seen at all. It is really tucked away. Commerce Way itself is actually quite hard to find unless you know where you're going. But then even when you get to this, this building, you're, you're behind the existing user of 30 Commerce. So we kept the aesthetics of the landscaping primarily just to the entranceway where we have, you know, the island, the landscape islands around the parking, we have a couple shade trees and a mix of deciduous ever, evergreen shrubs. We have a mix of flowering and ornamental plants in that shrub layer as well. The area that we're disturbing adjacent to the residential is where we put all the evergreen trees. So anywhere that we had to disturb the existing vegetation in order to make grades tie in for, especially for that access driveway down to the basin, we're, we're putting back 35 evergreen trees in that area to replace that buffer. There, right now, at the smallest point, there will be some areas where about 15 feet of existing trees will be able to remain. But after we're done replanting that area, we'll have 30 feet of basically non, non-disturbed vegetation. And the only disturbance within that 30 feet would then be that gravel accessway to get down to the basin. If you look, if you kind of look at that perimeter driveway that comes around the back, we have roughly, I think it was about 60 feet of, of vegetation now, whether it's for the proposed vegetation or the existing vegetation along that entire property boundary. So again, our intent here was to try to reduce the, the impact as much as possible to the existing buffer and anything that we did touch to replace with additional evergreen trees. And again, that area of the site also will have no traffic at all, no vehicle traffic except for an emergency situation. There's access gates right here and on the other side. So not only will the trucks not be able to circulate, but even the regular employees, if they came and parked in this spot, you basically have to turn out and come back around the building in a counterclockwise direction to leave. And again, we did all this with the intent of, of not influencing additional, you know, car activity in the back.
And you guys, you guys have no problem if that becomes a condition in the permit? Because obviously you don't even know who's going in there and then they-
That's correct.
That's acceptable, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Subject to putting in a knock box or something for the fire and-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what this was, this is a, just a colored version of the photometric plan from lighting. We took the, just the lighting plan that was submitted with part of our set and emphasized through just some colors where the, the zero-foot candle levels are. So everything you see in blue is ratings of zero. Anything in the green is, is only a 0.5-foot candles, and the red is really the areas that are above one. So really, you know, we, we proposed house side, house side shields like on all the perimeter lighting to make sure that all the flow direction of the lights was facing back towards the building and really only emphasized the illumination of the area that we needed to provide for, you know, vehicle safety and, and circulation. But we have really quick cutoffs right beyond our driveways so that, you know, we're nowhere close to having really any spillover on adjacent properties.
So Chairman, do you want us to have questions now on the sites?
Just one thing before I open it up to, just because you have this one up. The, the ones that are going to be in the, the access road that isn't going to be used much, is it possible to have those be, you know, more along the lines of motion?
Yeah, I think so.
And then that way they're off almost all the time.
Yeah.
Unless, you know, your crit is running by or something, I guess, setting it off. But otherwise, there's no reason to light that up constantly.
Yeah, I don't, Tyler, I don't think we have any problem with that, right? We have no intention of having operations of any kind back there, so usually you would-
I want there to be light because obviously, you know, we don't want people lurking about back there and not having the lights kick on when they are. But if there's nothing back there, why not just cut down the lights up?
I think that's a reasonable request.
Okay. So then with that, you guys will hold off on traffic for a second. Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great permit, great paperwork, great, everything in here looks, looks awesome. Did a great job. We don't get this too often, but you did do a great job. I had a bunch of questions, so no potential tenants yet?
No. The reality in today's marketplace, you have to essentially go to the market with a permit in hand or no one will talk to you.
Sure.
But I can't say it's not a company that sounds like a river. So people are always afraid of that. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't suit that.
Okay. I like where you put the docks as far as the design, away from the residential. One of my big concerns was the buffing area between the residential that backs on 12 Road to the building there. It seems like you got enough, enough space there and-
And you'll notice that we, we staggered them so that you do, you allow the canopies to develop, but you also maintain a perimeter, essentially a blockade.
Sure. A couple of other questions you probably have no answers as far as hours of operation. I mean, that's still up in the air. I mean, that's a concern for, for residents of the area as well, you know, so. So I know you're putting a retaining wall in.
Yeah.
How many feet is that going to encompass? That's just astronomical number, I'm sure.
Yeah, it, it's, it's pretty substantial in terms of what-
The lid of-
Yeah, that's, I know, I know what you're saying. It's wrapping a large perimeter of that whole driveway.
Yeah.
And I will say that per our client's direction, we started with a, with a typical approach that engineers do, which is we graded it out.
Yeah.
And we made the grades work. It wasn't a problem. They told us, wow, you're taking down way too many trees. I, I'm going to put in a wall instead. So we cut it back and put in the wall. So they're choosing to basically pay for an extra large section of walls-
Yeah.
-to maintain a significant amount of trees.
Right.
So-
That's, that's perfect for some of the residents that have questions about that-
Yeah.
Because that's going to come up, so. But just a couple of other things, any plans for potential solar?
I don't know. Anything Tyler on solar?
So we construct all the roofs with an additional five pounds per square foot of weight so that they're all solar-ready.
Okay. Large, large building, good potential for, you know, no, no blocking of trees anywhere in the area, so. But that's all I have for right now. I know you have a bunch of issues with the town engineer, so we'll be working with this for a while, I guess, but all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think from my perspective, you've done a marvelous job here. There are only a few engineering firms that I would say that about, I mean, complete package. And you have done a great job, as you have done before.
I assume you refer to law firms too in the same context?
I was going to do it. You jumped the gun because I was going to do it. Now that I patted you on the back, have you had any communication with Mr. Hardeman or his office about those items that he has checked off?
Yes, you're, you're referring to Mr. Hardeman's letter from, from last week. So, yeah, he, he's been great to work with. We actually had some pre-submission calls where we, we got really technical on the stormwater approach and the, and the grading, and he was really, really good at directing us and, and making sure that we addressed that. These comments in his letter are, we are, have no problem addressing these.
Okay.
So I haven't had a chance to go through one by one and, and talk with him about these, but we, I am, I don't have any concern about addressing these comments.
Okay. That's terrific. I'm glad of that. Thank you. All sets. Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick questions too. I know you mentioned riprap, but I didn't really see it on the drawing. Is that going like north of the retaining wall?
So, so the only riprap point is we have, we have a basically a flared end, like a concrete channel discharge point from each pipe, right? So if any of the basins were to overflow-
Okay.
-then they have an outlet relief point.
Right.
And that, so it's not a direct discharge point, it's more of the overflow only.
Yeah.
And what it is, is at the end, we, we have stabilization calcs we have to do to prove that if it does overflow, that the stone is going to basically mitigate and slow down the flow so you don't have erosion down into the wetland area. So those, those are shown, but they're, they're not very big, and they're only in a couple areas along the slope line.
And then, you know, the 30 feet is a, is a reasonable buffer. You're not really showing like any rooftop mechanical equipment, and it's, and I think-
That's correct, yeah.
-perfect layout for loading docks and so forth, you know, to move it away. The, the million-dollar question down the road somewhere will be the hours of operation of the, of the tenant, you know what I mean? So that's a little bit of a wild card today.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, is, is there any mechanical screens anticipated, you know, on the roof to, you know?
Yeah.
Because I mean, 30 feet is from here to that wall and, you know-
Yeah. So, so what I will say-
That's the property line, right?
Yeah. No, so, yeah, so the building itself is set back over 100 feet from the property line. The, that, additional planting is the 30 feet. But what I will say, and it's kind of hard to see because this, these are not detailed architectural construction drawings yet. This is a, this is a, is a rendering of where we believe the aesthetics of this building is going to look. There is like what appears to be more of a false wall up there.
That wall.
Right. You have a parapet aspect that usually is what we typically try to do to screen as much rooftop units as possible as opposed to having individualized screen units for each unit. So I think that is what the architect is intending to do, but we have not gotten to that phase of having detailed like MEP drawings and HVAC drawings yet to, to place all the units.
And what was the pounds per square foot you mentioned on the, on the roof construction that you were thinking?
It's an additional five for solar that we put across the entire roof.
I see. Okay. So, and that's a, that's a great question too, because I mean, there's always, you know, potential option down the road, you know? I don't know what the, how much sun shines on that area down there. There's a lot of trees, you know, that, but you know, you have a lot of water, a lot of stormwater to manage there as well. And I'm sure you're talking to engineering, the town engineer about that.
Yep.
And you know, I mean, you know, vegetative roots is another, you know, option for improving stormwater quality and quantity too, you know, to try to control runoff a little bit if that ever was, you know, was something that might be incorporated into the, into the design. So that would only, but then that would, I'm sure that would require a more robust framing system. Yeah. Just food for thought, just food for thought. I know you guys have a little ways to go from there, but I think that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, the mechanical screens, the riprap, and, and the hours of operation. Thank you.
So first, you jumped the gun, Mr. Buckley, because I was the one who was going to say that. I seriously considered making a, a condition in the permits that you have to come in and give a tutorial for having this stuff straightened out and set before it even comes in here every time because, you know, it prevents us from having to pull teeth and, you know, ask for this, ask for that. You know, people at home may mistake that for this process going quicker for some reason and they don't understand why. That's why. Because we don't have to ask for everything because it was already provided. We don't have to pull teeth because you're trying to not do something you know you're going to have to do anyways, but make us ask for it.
Right.
So for those at home, that will be why this more than likely won't seem as painful as some of them do. Because Mr. Buckley brings his stuff in here, you know, ready to go and delivers the platter to the, to the table. So the only one I didn't hear, I don't know if you mentioned, but you, you've got more than enough snow storage places all around?
Yeah. So we do, we actually did, actually from the, the meeting that we had back in April when it was just conceptual, that was brought up as a concern. And what we did was, it was actually something we changed in the layout. I'll use this plan for example. You see that, see in the lower left-hand corner across from where the entrance is, how that wall kind of like bends out like a hook? That's all because that's all snow storage area. We pulled the whole wall back and made a, a flat lawn area with basically zero-edge curb reveal so that the entire parking field for the, for the employees can get, can basically get snow storage into that location.
But you'll still be fine even if you have to show that as the additional parking?
Yes, because we'll-
And it might actually become parking.
That's correct.
You'll still be all right?
Yeah, we still have room there because we also put a second one in the back by where the loading area is. So any of the, the snow removal from that can go into that lawn area, that triangular lawn up adjacent to the building. So basically, we factored in-
I just don't want it destroying the, the trees that you're leaving-
Yeah, right.
-because it starts getting jammed into, you know, and then that stuff's not there anymore.
Right.
You start to lose what we thought was part of the buffer.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The good news is in this site, since we have really, we have raised curve, right? Containing the perimeter of everything on site. So any snow storage area, as it melts, all gets, all gets recaptured right into our stormwater management system. We don't have any areas where we're snow storage and then it just runs to the wetlands or anything like that. It is all contained within the, within the system.
You know, and no, no tractor-trail is just stacking up in there.
No, I, I think honestly, this, with this type of user that we're going to market for, I, I think we're going to have plenty of usable loading space for their operation.
All right, okay. All right. Obviously, as everybody else said, you've got some stuff just to straighten out, town engineer and-
Yep.
You know, anyone else before you come back and we continue. So that's it for me for right now. With that, I'll open it up to the audience. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. You know what?
You want the audience?
Before we do traffic, let's do these questions. I'd like to stick to topic.
Sure, that's fine.
So this is one of those cases where I'll let people come back up if they want on traffic, but if you, anyone in the audience has any questions or comments on this section of what we're discussing, I'll give you another chance with traffic after we do traffic if that's what you wanted to discuss. But if anything that we've discussed so far is something you want to comment on, you can come up and we can do that now.
I'm just wondering about-
You gotta do it at the mic or we can't hear you. Or they can't hear you at home.
I have another question.
Hold it down and just give your name and address and then the floor is yours.
My name is Gail Stone, 46 Trow Road in Tewksbury. And you had mentioned something about Trow Road. Does this have anything to do with Trow Road?
No, the building is behind Trow Road.
Yes, yeah, right. Okay, I just didn't-
We're just concerned about you as residents, making sure you got enough privacy and-
Because I was the first one to get a notice. And my notice, do you know who's going to be in that building?
No, we, we, sorry, we-
Because my notice said logistics is what my notice said.
I'm not sure what logistics means.
Logistics, you know, they have those big trucks, logistic trucks. My first notice said logistics. So I went to the building inspector, and when I went down there, I found out that I was the only one that got a notice, and it wasn't even involving me because it was within 100 yards, whatever, feet, 100 feet.
Yeah.
And my brother, my son lives on 40, on Rosemary Road, and my nephew lives on Rosemary Road. Nobody on Rosemary Road, which was in that 100-feet area. Nobody on, nobody. And I called three people tonight on Old Main Street. They didn't know nothing about this meeting, nothing.
Could be too far away.
And they're very concerned because those trucks that are there now go by. We don't want to get into the traffic, but the conservation committee, did this go through the conservation committee? Because that's the first step.
We're before the conservation commission currently.
You did? Did you get approval?
No, no, we're before them. It's ongoing right now.
Oh, it's ongoing because-
More likely we, we run concurrent. They'll, they'll be with us and they'll be with conservation at the same time.
Yeah, because speaking to engineers and other towns and they can't even put in pipes if it's a wetlands or anything. I mean, there's, is, and I can't imagine them putting in, using those wetlands, using the, the trees and everything with all the animals. We have quite a few animals, you know? We have deer and everything coming across the street, even on Trow Road. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned. It's a big building, it's a small area. I've lived here all my life. I played in that area, skated in that area. So I, I, you know, it's, it's not that big of an area, believe me. And it's a very small road. The road hasn't changed the years, so I'll get along with the traffic.
Ms. Lauter? All right, we gotta stop because once you're away from the microphone, nobody can hear it anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, long as done.
That's what I mean, but if you talk as you walk away, they can't hear it at home. And then when they do the notes, they won't be able to pick it up on the recording. That was all, so you're fine.
So we'll go on to traffic when you're ready.
Okay. Slatter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to speak to the notice aspect of this. I believe we spoke when you came to the office. And I had discussed with you at that time that it's the three hundred feet from the property line that gets captured during the planning board. The conservation commission is a hundred feet from the property line. And I can certify that these folks submitted an affidavit that the conservation mailing was made. And I actually personally am the one who did the planning board mailing. And I can I can testify, I'll I'll write an affidavit that it did go out. What the, you know, no, no shade to you, Vinny, whatever the post office did with it after that, I don't know. But I do know that it didn't, it went through our meter and it left the office. So I I'm glad you you folks found your way here tonight, I'm glad you're letting your neighbors know. But I will say that the mailing did go out and I I apologize that they didn't get it.
The second time, you get the cut, you get the letter.
Good.
I got the cut.
Good. Okay, just wanted just wanted to clear that up.
Did I go off certified?
No.
It's regular first class.
Correct.
It used to go certified, right? All right, so we'll we'll end that there and we'll move on to. Did I'm sorry, did you have anything? Did you want to, you didn't want to come up, did you? Okay. I just wanted to give her a chance. All right, then we'll come back to you guys and we'll do traffic.
Thank thank you, Chair, Board Members, Claude Meechaw, MDM. I want to keep this brief. The site itself is located in an industrial area. In fact, the building that is nearest at Thirty Commerce is a pretty good representation of the type of use that is contemplated here. Standard warehousing, distribution. And it's accessed, of course, off of Old Main Street, which is a signalized intersection, provides good regional access to I four ninety five, which is immediately to the west of the property. So great regional access. What we've prepared to understand the impact of this commercial development, industrial development, is is a traffic study that follows good industry practices. It inventories existing ground traffic volume counts and safety conditions. It looks seven years into the future to understand what kind of growth might occur in the area. And then we we estimate the amount of traffic or additional trips that might be generated by the by the use itself and how that relates to those existing and future year conditions. I'm pleased to report that, you know, the site itself is a very modest generating use. In fact, the building at Thirty Commerce Way is is a seventy five thousand square foot building, so it has comparable size. The inventory of traffic that we did in two thousand twenty two, twenty twenty two has about a dozen vehicles being generated by that existing seventy five thousand square foot building over the course of a typical peak hour. And this particular property is likely to generate an equivalent number of vehicles during those same peak hours, right? So again, modest generated use, not a high generator of of large trucks over the course of a typical hour or peak hour. You might see a truck coming in and and going to that rear portion of the site. And then during that same hour, another vehicle leaving, right? So very modest generating. All of the roadways in this area are designed as a commercial district to accommodate that type of larger vehicle. So the site itself, of course, can accommodate it, but this the roadway systems, including the signalized intersection at Old Main Street can easily accommodate those types of vehicles. The only comment that we've received through departmental review really had to do with truck maneuverability. Can a larger truck actually swing properly at the Old Main Street signal without encroaching on an opposing lane? And we've done the modeling that demonstrates that it can accommodate those larger vehicle types. So really adequate infrastructure, low impact. Old Main Street itself in the vicinity of the property only carries about thirteen or fourteen hundred cars per day, which is a very low low volume relative to all of the other area roadways that surround it. Finally, we didn't see any safety deficiencies in the area. We we actually took a look at five years' worth of safety records for the intersections in and around this area. These intersections are all low impact areas, have crash rates that are well below average, frankly. So we we conclude in our findings that the project is well supported by the existing roadway systems, adequate roadway maneuverability is provided and no need for any kind of safety countermeasures as a result. And I could go into any of the details that the board might want to see. There are a couple of extra slides here that go into some of the other details. The next slide would give you kind of a snapshot. A lot of numbers and colors here, so it's everything I just said. The the amount of traffic that this is likely to generate is measured at about a dozen vehicles either coming into or leaving the property over a typical peak hour. These are the commuter hours most people are on the road trying to get to or from work. The vast majority of employee related trips will be oriented to or from the north. Virtually all of the commercial vehicles, which is a very small part of the traffic story here, are oriented to or from the four ninety five quarter to the north. Again, they're not impacting local neighborhood streets. And the next slide, if you could advance.
Sure.
Just goes through some of the key findings. I don't need to rehash those, I've already summarized them verbally. And glad to answer any specific questions that you might have.
All right. Start with Mr. Fallow this time.
Well, two things, not to back up, but reviewing the your butters list from directive two chosen by these people. The town did the butters list for the site. And I'm gonna give you my copy. And you'll see who was notified. Just so you know that the people that do this job. I'll give it to you. All right, no, no, when we're done. Thank you. Getting back to this gentleman. We knew we knew going in what this was going to do because we've done this before, Thirty Commerce Way, obviously. Same size building and similar size building, as you're not to reiterate what you said, but it's been done before and I not heard any complaints or any complaints. Any amount of complaints, obviously, some, you know, something will happen and could be a mishap, could be a misdirection. Truck goes the wrong way, has to turn around. That that happens, but this to me is a is site that has the right width, roads, driveways, turnarounds. I'm happy because it's emulate, it's, is that the right word? It's mimicking the same building that was is presently there. So if it worked then, it should work now. Thank you.
Mr. Fatale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no sign at the at the Trel Road right hand turns that says no trucks, do you know that?
I'm not familiar with the specific signs that might may or may not exist. I know that there are pavement striping markings there, the stop sign, but I'm not sure about the truck signs.
Okay, we would like to keep the heavy traffic trucks off that road. It's a private road for the residents, so, you know, like to insist upon that when a new tenant does come in to not use the local roadways, you know, to cut through or whatever, so.
That's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, so that was my only concern. I mean, I've been to the area a number of times and it's tough little corner getting out there to the light and you're coming down, you know, the road there, but it's being done regularly by people, so I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I it seems to me, based on your presentation, that there there'll be very little additional traffic impact, trucking impact down there. So I I'm very comfortable with the the presentation as it stands in the traffic flow.
Yeah, I don't really have any specific question. I mean, you know, this is a pretty short trip, once you're off of Main Street to get to where the site is, so it's not like whatever trucks are coming in are gonna be traversing side roadways for very long. I mean, it's a pretty straight shot. Once you, you know, you make that turn off of Main Street, it's kind of in, it's out, you know, not too many places for them to go or get lost, which is good because you don't want trucks having to turn around. I mean, kind of hard there to get lost, if you're honest. If they do, you might want to talk to them.
We would agree that subject to town regulations, put appropriate signage.
I mean, we've done with some of the others, you know, we also asked that, you know, obviously that you instruct, you know, the drivers that are gonna be coming in and, you know, that they have to stay off the the surface roads. Obviously, what happens, what happened, you know, but, you know, we do as many things as we can, you know, belt and suspender to, you know, to try and avoid, you know, GPS saying something that's not accounting for the fact that it's a truck versus, you know, you know, two doors. So but otherwise on the traffic, we're good right now. So I will open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns on traffic? You just state your name and your address.
Josephine Connor, two twenty Old Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass.
You're all set, you're ready to go.
I don't know, you say it's safe down there, but I've seen school buses. We have bigger and bigger trucks going by, I don't know, lately, just within the last six months or a year, I don't know. And when the school bus tries to go around that corner, that corner is sticking way out. Why they got a side around thing sticking out like that, I don't know, because it's just nothing, really. Anyway, when the school bus comes and the trucks come, it's very dangerous.
Okay.
Just go down there and take a look or watch them when they both come. And we're having bigger and bigger trucks and we've had a lot more traffic. I just want them to take a look at that to see, because to me, it's it's a danger, it seems it's unsafe right now with the. I mean, the trucks were big before, but these are like really big ones that are going by. So I just want them to take a look at it and see, you know. And what's this stormwater thing? Will that affect us with our cellars, having water in our cellars or anything from?
No, so we'll we'll jump back the other section just for just because you asked it just now, but that's why we have all that get run through the town engineer. Town engineer won't tell us it's okay and he won't sign off on it until and they're not allowed to have more coming off the site than before. So those are the rules. So once the numbers have been run and they confirm that the numbers are correct, then move forward from there, but until they are, we don't.
Okay, and then on the the two trucks now, the bigger trucks, if two of them are going by, one's coming this way and one's coming that way, it's very hard for them to get by.
Okay.
I just want them to take a look at that, that's all.
So do you have any comments on those?
No, I think I think the roadways there were specifically designed to accommodate that type of activity.
They were, but we're having bigger and bigger trucks. That's why I want you to go down and look at that. They're not the regular big trucks we got, they're they're longer or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure what bigger versus
Yeah, I don't know.
regular size that might mean, I don't, you you were down there for traffic studies, I don't know.
Yeah, the the newer generation of tractor trailers can be as large as about sixty five to seventy feet long because they've got sleeper cabs and refrigeration units on them, et cetera. They're they're interstate vehicles. I don't anticipate that those are the types of trucks that would be generated by this facility. We know that there are other commercial uses along this road. Truck inspection company, you know, there's another packaging company right around the corner there, it's EVP Supply Solutions, right? So there are other users in that area that have many more truck bays, if you will, than what we're proposing here or that exist at the Thirty Commerce. So I can't really speak to how you might control those uses, they're already there. The proposed use is gonna generate very few trucks, frankly, and they're gonna be more standard sized is the best way to put it.
But if they weren't, the road still accommodates them, is your point, right?
In fact, the departmental review I mentioned had a specifically look at a WB sixty seven, which is that larger
Yep.
vehicle type, to do a swept path analysis, a computer model to show how it would work.
Same one we use for the fire trucks.
Yeah, basically the same thing and and it all it all works. You know, I I'm not saying that when one truck passes another that it doesn't look like they're they're close because they they probably are separated by a couple of two or three feet. If you're a large truck, that's that's relatively close, but the the roads are designed to accommodate that safely.
And that light that you're waiting to go out, sometimes it stops like you can only wait two cars and then it stops again and the traffic is all the way down the other end of the street. So maybe they want to look at that light too when they do it, you know, I'm just saying.
I mean, yeah, the timing.
Timing might.
Yeah, the timing can be checked, but that's by the the town makes those decisions, they can't.
I mean, just to look at that, because I mean, it does affect the traffic and the safety of the kids on the bus and the the big trucks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Could she might have something there. Could you or your office check the timing? Or have whoever's in charge of that check the timing on on those lights and see if they're sufficient for a couple of trucks to go by or cars or whatever?
Sure, we could do that.
That way, maybe that will.
Those signals, you know, are are, I believe in this case, it's an actuated signal, which means that it kind of adapts to the traffic as it comes and goes.
Yep.
You know, this project where it's, you know, inbound movements in the morning are predominantly what's happening. It's not really affecting how you get out from Old Main Street.
Right.
In the afternoon, you might see, you know, a dozen vehicles over an hour, so it's it's every five minutes or so you might see an extra car, truck. So the project itself isn't likely to really change much there, but we we can certainly confirm, you know, what's there.
Thank you.
Just bring the microphone.
And then this is, I'm quoting Dan here a little bit in your office, but we looked at the level of service at the intersection to look at the build versus no build. Meaning that if we didn't construct this versus we did construct it, what the level of service or there would be a degradation at that intersection, they didn't find that.
Yeah, and and those are the details that are in the traffic report, so, you know, that dozen cars that I mentioned are not going to change the amount of delay or the queues that actually occur there. It's such a small number of trips that you probably wouldn't know that the site was built after it was built. And and the signal is intentionally designed to to actuate, so if you do have an extra car that arrives, it tends to add a few extra seconds to that cycle, you know, to get that vehicle through. But we'll we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hi, Gail Stone, Forty Six Trel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you guys switch, I'm sorry.
Well, they're sisters.
What I wanted to comment on, too, is Thirty Eight Main Street. It's a very dangerous area. I'm telling you, the cops should be down there watching because you'd make a million dollars just on the cars going through that red light. I was going to church one Sunday morning at nine o'clock. There was a car in front of me going up the hill. The light turned green, but he just went on the green. He didn't, I have to stop and you have to wait until you see no cars coming because they all fly through that red light. Well, this man didn't do that, he just kept going on the green light, which he had the right of way, but this car coming down the hill just missed him. There was another car coming up the hill towards me and there was another lane open. Well, he missed that car and it was a good thing the lane was open because he would have killed somebody. That happens more than I can tell you when I'm on that road. And I tell everybody, please do not go through that green light, you have to stop because these cars go right through that red light. And another thing I want to make is when you have these trucks and they try to come around that corner and if you're there, they can't make the corner. You have to back up. And if there's anybody behind you, and I've done that several times for those big trucks. I'm on Forty Six Trel Road and on a Friday, I have traffic in front of my house and I don't know how long it goes down Trel Road because it can't get through to that light. I think they hold the light longer for the cars going up and down than they do going up. But I'm telling you, the cars, he was talking about maybe just the traffic from Thirty Three Commerce Way. But there's a lot of other trucks, like he said, up the other end. There's constantly trucks going on that small, narrow road. And when I talked to the man in the and just tonight, who lives right on Main Street, right across from the tracks, he didn't know anything about this meeting. And he says, I'm telling you, he said, when two of those trucks go by, there's not even an inch. He said, they have to stop and slowly pass each other because there's not enough room for two trucks to go by, there isn't. It's a small road, I've lived there all my life, there's no way. So I don't know who's making up what or what.
I think we gotta be careful with a couple of things there. One, we keep making references that the letters didn't go out. The letters went out.
Oh, yeah, all right.
What people may have done with them with their mail and maybe it went with the junk, I don't know.
There's a lot of them that didn't receive them and it could have been the mail.
Hold on, I just, that's where I have a problem because you keep saying didn't receive.
Well, it could have been the mail, I don't know.
Well, what I'm saying is, you're saying they didn't receive it, but we don't know they didn't receive it, see it as something that they just didn't think much of and then it went. So let's just be careful that we don't say they didn't receive it.
No, it could be the mail, because the mail is slow a lot.
We didn't do what we were supposed to do.
The mail is slow a lot.
And as Ms. Lauter had stated, the the letters went out, so just. So just, I just want to be
No, I know my brother got one and my nephew got one because I told them and they got it, but nobody else did.
And then just the other thing is, you know, the, the, you know, the, the, the trucks in operation, you know, how someone may be or may or not be driving versus as, you know, when the traffic, you know, studies are talked about. They, they have to go by how big the road is, how big the trucks are and say, those things fit. They do because that's what the numbers tell you. What you're saying is in operation, if someone's not where they're supposed to be driving on the road, yeah, the trucks are going to end up being closer. That's, that's a different thing though. Like to say that the road isn't the right size isn't actually accurate as much as you're saying in practice, what they're doing may make the road seem smaller. That's all.
Right, and the neighbors, if they're walking down the street, walking their dog or walking their children, they're thrown off the side of the road because of the traffic. There's no place for them to walk anymore. That's gone now. That's gone before this company even moves in. There is no place to walk in Tewksbury. Do you know that?
We have discussed sidewalks quite often here.
Not just side, there's no place to go where it's really kind of nice. Do you know where I go to walk? I go to Andover to the, to the cemetery.
Now you're bringing up the town that shall not be named as far as I'm concerned, but that's all right.
But no, but I'm saying, the, the town is just getting over ro- ridden with, with all this stuff. But, you know, is that really necessary? Do they have to jam everything into one area? It's only a small area. It's a small area. I mean, I know there's a lot of land back there because my father owned land back there years ago.
Okay.
But, you know.
Thank you.
It's, it's really pathetic the way they're throwing the car, the trucks on that road. In that highway, it's not really tangible for them to go out in that.
Thank you. Ms. Loder, did you have something?
Just a clarifying question for, um, the resident. When you say that it's impassable and trucks can't pass, are you talking about Trel Road? Are you talking about?
Old Main.
Old Main, okay. That, I just, I, I wasn't following the train of thought.
I have to back up to let those trucks.
Understood. Okay.
Is that right? Is that normal?
No.
I don't know. To me, it's not normal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mike. Anyone else? Let me just write, see if there's anybody else in there. Anybody else in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing and hearing that at this point, we'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. It, um, when you, um, if I may, when you review the, that area again, possibly the stop line is out too far. And I don't know. But if it's out too far, then the trucks coming in is going to be affected by, as you know, those people would have to back up if the stop line is out closer to thirty-eight than it should be. And then I know that's a difficult thing because of the turn. I understand that. So whatever can be done.
Yes, and that, that really was the subject of the comment, uh, departmental comment.
Yeah.
And, uh, the traffic study, the very back of the technical attachments to that study is that computer model that I mentioned
Yep.
with the WB sixty-seven and it actually shows what that path looks like.
Yep.
Um, the only movement that would be affected by that stop line is if you're heading north on thirty-eight and you want to make a right turn.
Yep, yes.
And that's not a movement that this project is going to be generating.
Right.
Uh, but at, at that largest, almost seventy-foot-long vehicle,
Yeah.
um, the front corner of the bumper and a portion of the trailer might go over the, the center line by a couple of feet, two, three feet. And, and that's, you know, possibly what might be happening on occasion.
Yeah.
Or if a truck driver doesn't take the turn quite as efficiently as they should, that could technically happen.
And obviously some people don't follow the directions of what is on the road.
Right.
And not to say in all cases, but I've seen them go beyond that further up so that they're paral-, you know, in line with the turn, but they're way beyond the stop sign. So sometimes we're at fault.
Yeah. True.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I just make one comment?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm sorry. You know, to everyone's point here, you know, we do these studies and we do these analyses. You know, they're technical in nature and need to be precise and all these things. But speaking from experience in building these facilities of all different sizes, up to five hundred thousand square feet, down to fifty thousand square feet, and just speaking in practical terms of what we observe in the market and the things that we study and look at for different tenants and things of that nature. You know, the drivers, uh, and the tenants are motivated to get to the highway, right? That's where they want to go. That's where they're coming from. That's where they want to go. So this turn that you've done in your analysis here, well, you know, I'm not going to make a claim is never going to occur. It's going to be really, really uncommon and undesirable for the tenant and the drivers to be coming from that direction. They're going to be coming from into I four ninety-five.
Only if they miss the turn.
Right.
And they go by it and go, oh.
Right.
Now you're going to make that loop and then you are making that right that you'd rather not be making. But yes.
A- absolutely, right. It's an undesirable, it's not, not something that's going to be planned. And, and the analysis that we're doing for sixty-seven, these are trucks that we see at much, much, much larger facilities. And again, a tenant almost certainly will not be having trucks that size at something like this.
Mr. Patel, do you have something?
Yeah, just one question. Um, Fire Department, do we get an okay from them as far as the, um, the analysis and the turning of the vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen any, um, actual review letters or comments come through yet from Fire, but I know that we used, uh, their, their truck in our model and our circulation to make sure that it, it can maneuver.
We usually get an okay from them saying, yeah, it looks like it's, it's, it's feasible and it will work, so. We'll be looking.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I think it's our intent, hopefully by the next meeting, to have the town comments addressed to your satisfaction, hopefully, uh, but clearly to their satisfaction. Um, and these are all legitimate issues and we intend to respond to them.
Very good. Mr. Duff, did you have anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
So just if I'm, if I'm recapping right, uh, we want to see the parking can fit. You know, if you can get the, the sign off from Fire that, you know, typically what ends up happening is they'll say, we won't sign off completely until we see it in real life. Then we're going to be the final side, which, you know, but we want that one that's just short of that where they tell us everything looks fine as it is on paper.
Yep.
Um, what I would like to see next time though is I'd like to see the, the, the sweep, uh, sweep slides up here so people can see the, the trucks moving along, making the turns and see the red lines, basically. And if you have a rendering of the building of kind of what it will look like, kind of looking in from sort of the outside, you know, a couple of views maybe of what it would look like if anyone, and if it's one of those things where you're really not going to see it, that's fine. That, that's the point. But just something so people have that, that image that they can see, okay.
What are they seeing?
This is, this is how you kind of would see it. I think we did the same thing over on
Home Depot.
Yeah, exactly. That, you know what I mean? So if people get an idea of what maybe they don't see, I guess would be the better way to say it.
That's right.
All right? If I'm missing anything, please someone correct me.
I'd like to take that shit off the table. Right. But
No, just your other point, Mr. Chairman, about, about having the, the backlighting work on some type of a sensor.
Yeah, see what doing sensors.
You know, kind of include that. And I know, uh, the Fire Department, I know you said something about a Knox box. So the Knox box would have a key that would unlock the gate.
Yeah.
So the Fire Department would have to physically unlock the gate to do a drive around the building is kind of the, kind of the plan at this point.
That's right.
Okay.
There's one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Did you say fifty-eight employees possibly on site?
That's what we'll have a vision.
Okay.
Maximum fifty-eight.
All right, so obviously some work to do, some things to bring back. But we'll see you, I don't know if we'll see you at the July meeting. Is that your intent?
July eighteenth, July eighteenth is your next meeting.
All right, so then, uh,
If for some reason we can't meet that, we'll send a, an advance request so we don't clog your agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so then with that, I will entertain a motion to continue thirty Commerce Way to seven fifteen on our July eighteenth meeting.
Show them over, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, my ask on indulgence, it's been driving me crazy since I've been sitting here in Ozzler and Home Depot. What are those two things behind?
Time capsules.
Time capsules?
Yes, sir.
Good question. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Mr. Barclay, good to see you. We, we, last time we spoke was all through the, uh, Zoom meetings.
Right, right.
All the, um, women's free stuff.
I assume that's going okay?
I don't know. I think so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, one sixty, one seventy, River Road. Do we have anybody here for that?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for reading, Mira.
All right. Once you get settled, if you just give your name for the record, whoever yours.
Hi, um, for the record, I'm Mira Cousins with Civil Design Consultants. Um, so I'm actually here to request to continue the meeting. I apologize for not giving you a heads up earlier today. It's my understanding that we're waiting for additional comments from the town. So we'd like to continue to the next meeting.
All right, well, since you had to sit around and wait all this time just to ask for that, we won't be as mad about you giving us a last minute request. You paid a little price, we pay a little price. It'll work. All right, so let's look, and we got, uh, seven twenty. So we have a motion to continue one sixty.
Motion to continue one sixty, one seventy River Road to
Seven twenty.
Seven eight, the seven eighteen date.
Yeah, seven eighteen date at seven twenty.
Yep.
All right, I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Have a good evening.
I'm here for the next one.
Oh, all right. That's fine. Well, see now, at least it doesn't, wasn't a waste.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item E one, eight twenty. Uh, so this is a return to our administrative items, uh, part due. It's, uh, eight twenty-one Main Street Concept Plan Review. Saying, if you just again state your name for the record.
Sure. Uh, for the record, I'm Mira Cousins with Civil Design Consultants. So I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Eight Twenty-One Main Street LLC. Um, so we submitted two concept plans for the parcel located at eight twenty-one Main Street. Um, so the goal of this meeting is to discuss the concept plans, get your feedback and see if you have any preference for one layout over the other. So for a quick overview of the project, um, the total area of the parcel is approximately thirty thousand square feet. Um, the property has frontage along Main Street, Newton Avenue and Nelson Avenue. Um, it's located in the commercial zone and within the Village Residential Overlay District. Currently it's occupied by French's Seafood Restaurant. Um, you may remember back in March, um, we submitted a preliminary subdivision application that allowed us to freeze the previous zoning. Um, so I'll walk through Concept Plan One first. Um, so this layout provides eight residential townhouse units and a commercial unit. Um, the dimensions of the units along the eastern side are twenty-four by thirty-six feet. Um, and the western units are twenty-two by thirty-six feet. Um, this layout complies with the requirements under the Village Residential Overlay District and will not require any waivers. Additionally, um, one out of the eight residential units is proposed to be affordable. Concept Plan Two, um, so this layout proposes two buildings. Building one provides commercial space on the first floor and six residential units on the second and third floors. Building two will provide nine residential units over three floors. Two out of the fifteen residential units are proposed to be affordable. This layout would require waivers for a reduction to the minimum front yard setback along Nelson and Newton Avenue and a waiver for a reduction to the minimum parking requirement. So thirty-nine spaces are required with this layout and this layout provides twenty-eight spaces. Um, so we had an IDR meeting with town departments last week. In general, it seemed like they preferred Concept Two. Um, they did have some comments and suggestions that we will address when we formally submit an application. Um, one of the suggestions that we got from the town engineer regarding Concept Two was to eliminate the Main Street access and provide one-way access through the site from Nelson Avenue to Newton Avenue. Um, right now, we don't see any issues with that. By eliminating the access to Main Street, we can add more parking spaces and we can actually shift the buildings closer together. Um, so again, looking to get your feedback if you have a preferred layout and to incorporate any comments or suggestions that you may have.
All right, we will start with Mr. Duffy.
My reaction to this proposal is that, that it's way too many units for that site. And that's my initial reaction to that. Like, um, I think something in the neighborhood of six or seven would be allowed under today's zoning. And you're looking at fifteen units. So I think it's just trying to pack too much in to too small of an area. That many units. My, my initial reaction here, my, we might, I might like eight units. Proposal. I think that's all I really have at this point. As far as, as far as the, the, uh, access from, you know, between Newton and Nelson, that's a perfect scenario, I believe. Easy access for fire equipment and, and, and residents and so forth. But as far as trying to get fifteen units in those two buildings, I, I don't, I don't like that idea.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of my questions is why are they proposing Concept Two versus Concept One? From the idea I you went to, just, were they, that's, is that what they said, right?
Uh, we presented both concepts.
Yeah.
And we want to get feedback from the department. And so it seemed like they preferred Concept Two.
Okay. I don't prefer Concept Two because now you're looking at, um, a three-story building on Main Street that we don't really have too many of those. Plus, you know, nine units in a, in a building, I think is a lot. But, um, I like Concept One, um, with maybe a reduced number of units as well. And, and a concern I have is, um, is visitor parking. So if somebody has, uh, people over for whatever, drinks or dinner, is there enough parking for a visitor? And where do you propose any visitor parking?
Um, so right now with the zoning, we have two spaces per residential unit.
Yeah.
Um, we see these units to be like a studio or one-bedroom apartments. So I feel like one, one space or one and a half space kind of, um, would fit this. So that we will be looking at, um, I wrote this down here.
So the garages are going to only hold one car, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so that's for Concept One. They'd be garages.
Yep. Yeah.
But not for Concept Two.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of Concept Two at all because of the waiver you're going to need for parking spaces. Again, I had an issue with another site in town that we had no visitor parking, or not enough visitor parking. So, and I think a development this size, you know, you're going to have people over, people visiting, and they can't park anywhere else but in the, in the, in the, in the plan or in the project per se, unless you go on the other side of the streets. But just my opinion, so, all right.
So for Concept One, two cars can park in front of the building, and then you have another space inside.
Okay, but if you're husband and wife living in one unit, they probably have two cars. So one of the cars off front is going to be used for one visitor, you know, so. And you can't park anywhere else in the place unless you parked over at the commercial spaces. But, you know, but that's just a concern I have, visitor parking. And putting too much in and not having enough parking for visitors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, I'm going to have a battle here.
Well, it depends.
You haven't got, you haven't heard me? To be honest with you, I think Concept Two would work better physically with the vehicles being able to traverse front to back, out of the parking spaces, and out. I'm not sure about not having a Main Street driveway. That bothers me. And then you have to make a decision whether it's going to be Nelson or Newton. Wouldn't be both, would it?
It would be both. So if there were access.
Okay, all right, that's fine. But I think aesthetically, it would look better than a row house of buildings on the left side from Main Street and a shorter version on the other side. I don't see any place where you could have visitor parking in the townhouse style, whereas you have, I haven't counted them, but how many extras would you have on the apartment style?
So we'd be asking for a waiver. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We'd be asking for a waiver for a reduction in parking for Concept Two.
Yeah, 28, 20, yeah.
We're required 39 spaces, and this layout provides 28 spaces. But if we were to eliminate the Main Street access, I think we can add six or seven more parking spaces. We're getting closer to the required amount. I think we can shift the buildings together. So we may be able to get that parking count higher.
Well, I don't, at this time, know what to tell you. Because now you've taken away some of the pluses that I could see in this.
Right.
I'm going to hold off.
Sure.
All right?
All right. So I'm going to make sure that when you leave here today that you have absolutely no consensus whatsoever to bring back and have to explain tomorrow because I'm going to agree with Mr. Fowler in that I like Example Two. However, this is a 2D look, and part of my caveat to that is it would depend on what they look like. Because I understand like what Mr. Fattali is saying about the height, but if the way they're designed, they almost look like just a big house, then I can understand that because we have other big houses on Main Street. So to me, the design would be super important to how these two buildings look, whether or not I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, yeah.
However, I do like getting rid of the Main Street entrance and treating this like the site over Marshall and, the other one's an M2, right?
Jerome.
Jerome, yes.
Oh, Jerome, sorry. So we have in one side, out the other. So we have a one-way flow. It doesn't burden either side any more than the other. And without Main Street, you pick up some parking, which I think getting closer to 35 is, you know, more reasonable than 28. That was, you know, kind of, as much as I like that island and sort of the decorative of it, I think it's more important to get closer to that number and, you know, find other ways to be decorative in terms of how, you know, we landscape it and, you know, because again, it's the same thing as the design of the building. The design of the landscaping is going to be important in how you make this look for Main Street, to me, if it's going to be this version. I agree with, I think, everybody's comment on Version One, one that I don't like it. And two, that at its current size in this, in this example, it's too much for that spot. You know, things have changed. And, you know, we are, I feel, you know, not speaking for everybody. I feel that the likelihood of getting this kind of thing again seems unlikely. I know you froze zoning, so you have the right to ask for it. But I think, you know, things have changed, and what we're willing to allow, I think, has followed suit. So it's certainly not telling you you can't. I just think that you've heard everybody up here having a problem with how much. Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow it, I would like to provide some comment, context for the staff comments that Ms. Cousins mentioned, if you're through. I don't want to interrupt.
Um, I can always pick it back up. Go ahead.
Okay. So the particular issues with Concept One, the fire department raised being able to get in and turn around in there with, you know, a best-case scenario, an ambulance, and a worst-case scenario, a full ladder truck. So that is of some concern. Now, whether the driveway length falls just under the required, which if it's less than 150 feet in length, then they aren't required to do a turnaround, which I think is the case with this design.
Yes.
Just because that's the case doesn't mean that the fire department likes it or that it's practicable. And another note that the town engineer had on Concept One was that these units, the parking, would essentially be backing up into each other, and he also raised the concern about visitor parking. So it fits all of the, excuse me, it fits all of these zoning provisions without waivers, but it doesn't seem to be, you know, in the town engineer's opinion, the most practicable. And this is just my note, that the commercial space is only 792 square feet, and that seems to be the type of commercial space that goes unoccupied on Main Street. And that's just my personal, you know, caveat. For Concept Two, it was like Ms. Cousins said, it was the town engineer's suggestion and preference that the opening on Main Street be closed because when folks are leaving there, they're either going to be turning, they're going to be getting onto Main Street regardless, and either they're going to be heading towards Marshall Street, in which case they're going to come onto Main Street just to come off of Main Street, or they're going to continue on their way along Main Street. So where most of the traffic coming out onto Nelson or Newton would be directed toward Main Street anyway with less curb cuts, he saw that as a safety improvement. And like Ms. Cousins noted, if that area is closed up, the buildings can move in. There is, you may not even need the waivers for the front yard setbacks from those two roads. Plus, you can bring yourself closer into compliance with the required parking in the commercial spaces, 2,500 square feet, which in my opinion is a little more marketable and usable, and the likelihood of seeing it go empty is probably less likely than something a third of the size. And the rest of my comments would be opinions, but I just wanted to give some context. And, oh, sorry, excuse me, the fire department also was, excuse me, on board with the town engineer with being able to go in and get out because there's no funny business, no three-point turns or anything.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, thank you. One comment. Thank you, Ms. Fattali. I like that, no, right to the point. When the, with the design of the building, as the chairman brought up, you can make a three-story building look like a two-story. With the domes and the roof, okay.
The building commissioner mentioned that exact same thing, Mr. Fowler. Thank you. If that was something I meant to mention.
That takes the sting away. That's it. I'll give you an example of something we did approve that I, at this day, don't like, and I didn't like then. Noth and Indian Street. Not liking those buildings at all. Now, they're not finished, but, and there's no landscaping there yet, but...
Well, I'd be curious to see if they put in all the bells and whistles we asked for when they're all said and done.
That's why I hesitate to use that as an example. But this could be a lot different. This could be a lot different, a lot better-looking. Thank you.
Okay, so to pick up where I left off, my other, another comment was going to be the same of what Mr. Fowler just made about the commercial space. It's, you know, those standalones that are really just being done because they have to be done, and then they sort of sit there because they're not the real draw, the draw of the units. Then you have that building sort of sitting out there in the front all by itself. You know, there's no guarantee, obviously, that the commercial unit in the buildings definitely goes, obviously, you know, hopefully it'd be more marketable, but it doesn't seem as stark, you know, if it's part of a building that's already, you know, being used because the other units are being used. So that was another reason for my interest in Design Two. You know, I wouldn't disagree with the other members that, you know, these units here, how many bedrooms would these ones be intended to be?
Concept Plan Two.
Yes.
Studios and one bedrooms.
All right, so I don't hate it as much then, the number of units at one, you know, one bedroom. Because we're talking about, again, this is sort of, we're talking about like those professional, younger professional people looking for a way to be in Tewksbury and for the surrounding, you know, businesses, the more likely they may work for or, you know, or whatever, it doesn't feel as burdensome, you know, with those one bedrooms. And, you know, potentially getting two affordable units, something we keep, you know, making sure we're trying to keep in the forefront, is not a bad thing. If it could be smaller, obviously, I'd be in favor of smaller. I don't, but I'm not dead against the size. But there's a whole bunch of caveats of what would make me okay with it that have to go along with it.
Okay.
So, you know, and like I said, those are how it looks, the cutting it to the two off of the side streets. Because I mean, I think, you know, visually, just looking at it, that means it's the, under this version, there's a possibility of three cars all trying to come onto Main Street, possibly all trying to take the hard left, and all being on top of each other with everything else that's going on. I just can't see why it would be helpful to have a third so close to those other two streets if we could avoid it. So, I mean, Mr. Fattali is not wrong either, though. Like, these things have to account for people, like real life. And just squeezing in spaces close to, that don't, you know, that don't give us, you know, you really need to figure out a way to maximize the space and get as many spaces in here before I'm going to be okay with, you know, continuing to look at it. But I definitely feel like, at least for me, I think Design One's a nonstarter, both from a look, size, whatnot, so forth. Putting aside the concerns of the fire department and all that. It just feels like you've got way too many hurdles in Design One. Just to me, so. So I think that's it. You know, I don't think I can give you too much more than that, that you have more than enough confusion to go back with now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one more comment.
Yes.
I want to echo the chairman's comment about an elevation plan. I mean, that's all the difference in the world. We really have no context without knowing what the buildings are going to look like.
When we formally submit the application, we'll provide renderings.
Yeah, I'm not talking about full-blown set of plans here. I'm talking about something that this might look like.
For sure.
And, you know, reduction in the number of units, you know, eliminates the problem of having to get waivers for parking, you know, and Mr. Fattali's point of, and Alex's point about vehicles backing into each other trying to get out of parking spaces, there is a legitimate concern. And I think it's just, it's just a lot, a lot to fit on that property. That's my humble opinion here right now.
So I think, just to build, you know, and obviously, we know you're not going to come in with, you know, with the full-blown plans. But I think this is one of those ones where even just the rendering page of, again, at least the version I'm talking about, you know, giving sort of a little taste of what you'd be doing to make those buildings look like they don't really look like what they are.
Okay.
That's all. And I think that's Mr. Duffy's point, is the same thing. I mean, obviously, normally, you wouldn't have the renderings, but, you know, you're in a little different situation here. Trying to work with old zoning, new time.
Right, right.
Sometimes you're going to make accommodations as well, you know, for what might help us help you.
Sure.
Make, go and...
One bedroom is huge.
Yeah, I think that was a good one.
Relatively large, large unit.
You might have buried the lead there in having the small units because I think the other, most of the others we have are not that. You know, the townhouses, you know, they're, it's a lot of, you know, not a lot. I mean, it's just, you know, with the bedrooms, the people, how many people that means might be there, you know, makes a difference.
Right.
So, all right, so I think you've got, you've got some info to go back with anyways. Any other questions for us?
Nope.
All right. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, that brings us to old business. Does anybody have any old business they wish to discuss? Only once, twice, no old business. New business, anybody have any new business they wish to discuss? Once, twice, sold. Correspondents?
We have this rendering here.
Yes. So the Treehouse Brewery sent us a rendering for their idea for, what was it, 85?
85 Livingston Street, yes.
85 Livingston. Again, for everybody out there, that's that side building on the property, not the main building, that we discussed in our last meeting. I don't know how the members feel, if this looks like it sort of addresses what we were hoping for or not. Any comments?
Almost.
Almost. Mr. Fowler says almost. That means they're dangerously close, but not quite there. I think, I'm just going to guess, Mr. Fowler, that it's pictures what I would call three and four. Would you be in agreement that three and four still feel a little...
Yep.
Stale?
Yeah.
Yeah, a little stale, maybe, I don't know. I'm not sure what the answer is.
Right there.
What do you got there, Mr. Fattali?
Hip roof. Just a...
Visual building from Main Street, yeah, so...
Yeah, there was someone looking out...
It's a little stark.
Someone looking out of the main hall, Sycamore Hall.
Yeah.
They're going to be looking, they're in one of the most beautiful buildings in Tewksbury. I was in it all day Saturday, and I looked out at that corner half a dozen times, and I said, boy, that's going to really have to look nice. And to them, when they use the idea that they're only going to use four coolers on the roof and they'll set them back, well, that's fine if it's standing on the ground. But when you're in the hall, you're up about eight feet or more, plus your own elevation, looking out the windows, you're going to be seeing those. So I'd get back to the same roof line, just a fake, not a fake, but a false front roof line above that that would give it, and they're actually across the street in the new Tumac Tavern, they have it over there, so...
Yeah, I think, I would tend to agree, like, some, so, lots of times we do like those fake verticals and, you know, that kind of, you know, something that on that top sort of breaks up that straight boxy line. Because if you look at it from picture one, you know, you see that, sort of that nice triangle to the old, you know, but then you see no, nothing at the top of that boxy building, you know. And also, I'm not sure, you know, you know, how many times we get into signage and what qualifies or doesn't, but, you know, sort of like their insignia that they have up there at the top of the, you know, at the top of the building, you know, that kind of stamping or something like that on that other building, just something that breaks up just that straight brown, you know, all those straight lines. It feels very boxy, and I feel like it detracts from the rest of the building, which is so nice. And I don't think it's really, you know, like Mr. Fowler said, it doesn't require real architecture. It's really about what it looks like, you know, those full things that just sort of, you know, like we do with those windows, when you happen to put the fake kind of window in. You know, we know it's not a real window, but that's not what it looks like. It looks like a real window when you're going by, and that's, you know, and it gives you that sort of breakup. So that's what I would say, same, Mr. Fowler, you know, about just trying to figure out a way to make that look less stale.
Basically, a gabled roof on it would look a lot more appealing, basically. It would be more in line with the rest of the buildings.
And the same thing, it doesn't have to be a real roof. It just has to look like it.
Four, five, or six feet high from angle.
All right, so I think we're all saying the same thing then.
It's a heck of a lot better than a...
Yes.
And I understand that because they had three days to do it.
I think it was a day and a half.
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, they didn't have any time to do it.
No, no.
And I get that, but, you know, maybe they just haven't had time to think about that yet. I don't know, to think about an actual design.
Well, I mean, they've made a big deal out of the fact that it matters to them how everything looks.
Yeah.
So I take them at their word and that, you know, if any of their attention is, you know, sort of drawn away by the bigger buildings, I understand that. I think they've come to regret not having that other building look just as good as all the others at the end anyway. So, you know, it's their best interest as much as it is ours from a, you know, people-driving-by standpoint, so...
Is there something that we should reach out to them?
I can relate, excuse me, I can relay these comments, and I understand the point, the viewpoint from the main building. I think ultimately, they're looking at the curb appeal, and this addition that's going to be in the rear, you're really not going to see from Main Street for the most part, which I think...
They really are, they really are. You're going to see it from Main Street.
Only because you're going to see it on those times when the parking lot's in, and you're coming right down 38 past McDonald's, and you stare right into the parking lot, that's when you're seeing it. And, you know, of course, you know, when things are busy and all the cars are there and whatnot, yeah, maybe not as much. But, you know, I think there is still some visual appeal to having that side just a little... And again, you know, we're not talking about, you know, millions of dollars in construction changes. You know, it's really meant to be aesthetic to just give it that look that it already had in the main building. You know, we want their addition to be functional, but the trade-off, you know, kind of, I think, needs to be that it still stays, you know, aesthetically pleasing for everybody.
Sure.
So, all right, so that brings us to adjournment. If no one has anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We will see you in July. Happy Fourth to everyone.